Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us this evening. We have, we just completed a special meeting, and we have two meetings this evening. Normally, they're kind of combined into one, but the way it was written, we have two separate meetings, and so we're going to open one, complete that, and then close it, and then we'll go into our second meeting. So the first meeting will be our Housing Authority meeting. There's just one particular agenda item, so we're going to move into that one, and with that, I will hand over the meeting to the Chair of the Housing Authority, Councilwoman, C.C. Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Madellin. We're going to switch seats really fast here. Okay, with that, Alicia, could you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Commissioner Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Commissioner Steve Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Chairperson C.C. Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Vice Chairperson Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Derrick Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Commissioner Santos Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Donald Hawley.
Present.
Thank you, Alicia. With that, Hilda, since we did the invocation and the pledge, can we go ahead and pass that? Great, okay. Public comment: The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the Board of Commissioners on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the housing authorities. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an agenda, is an item on the agenda, the chairperson has the option to ask the speaker to hold the comment until the item is called. Comments on the items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until hearing is open. The Board is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions shall be drawn if the Board does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak? And with that, Ms. Rocha, can you state your name and address?
My name is Samantha Rocha of 3015 Mateo Avenue.
Thank you. And why are you here? We have something you'd like to share with council?
Yes. Hi, my name is Samantha Rocha of 3015 Mateo Avenue, and I would like to talk about the new neighborhood that's being built and a new park and more gatherings in Madera. I was talking with my dad, and I see the new neighborhood being built off of Westbury. My dad recommended I come and speak to you. I am the representative of Area One. Why more parks? Because Madera is growing. That means more kids, and that's why we need parks. If here, if here are happy kids, then a happier Madera and a better Madera. Our sub-ization has lots of new homes and lots of kids, but we have nowhere to play. We have no new parks to play and no new parks inside of our town. We also need more gatherings in Madera so we can become a better city and a better team of Madera. I'm Samantha Rocha, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha. Very well done.
That was fabulous. Fabulous.
We appreciate you coming out tonight with your sister also in attendance and your dad. With that, I'd like to move on to C1, Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hope you're doing very well. Last time we met on the CDBG grant application, I was directed to go back and reapply for administrative funds. I did that, and we had to use a different application to request these funds, and part of that application required that there be a resolution from the Housing Authority Commissioners okaying the process, that we could actually apply for the money, which you know is a little over $8,000. So that's why I'm here tonight. That's, I believe you got a packet late this afternoon that corrected two things on page seven of 11, under what was the average number of board members attending? The answer was seven, and the IRS employer number is listed there for your review. So what I'm asking your approval of is a resolution so that we may apply for the money.
Are there any questions from my fellow council members? Linda, I just had a few questions. On the budget, six, page six of 11, we have under salaries the whole amount of $8,679.
Yes.
But we're using $2,500 for grant funding. Is that coming out of the $8,000?
Yes, it normally does.
So would that be put in the budget under services, supplies, or consulting services?
Yes.
Okay, so out of $8,000, we're going to have $6,179 left, and just to refresh my memory, was that money supposed to be used for the case manager from CAPMC?
Case manager, yes.
Okay, and how much did it cost to have that case manager run the program last year?
Last year, we paid CAPMC $32,000 for the whole five-month period. This year, we're searching for other funds to make up that difference. I believe one of the questions you had asked me that I couldn't give a specific answer to was, how much does it actually cost to run this program without the capital funds, without the change in incorporating HVAC systems? The answer to that is $70,000, and I'll be happy to give you a breakdown of that anytime you would like, so that you can see. It was good for us to go through that exercise, too, so we can answer those types of questions. But yes, it goes to the case manager.
Okay, so out of the $70,000, we have $6,000 to pay for a case manager.
Right, but we're not going to do the program the way we have done it the last two years. Right now, if that's all we get, we'll hire a case manager, fire along that money last, and then just go ahead and use our system to get families in. I don't think we can do any more than six to 10 families with, with a case manager, one case manager. So we'll just have to make the best of it.
So how are we going to fund the water, utilities, PG&E?
That would have to come out of our general fund.
And do we have funds for that?
We don't have them set aside in this budget. We have some, but not the complete amount.
How much is some?
Some would be about $10,000.
So, refresh my memory, I think I asked this question before about the qualifications for a case manager. What are the qualifications for the manager? What are the, do we specifically, do they deal with both populations, both the homeless and the farmworker population that comes through?
No, they don't. They only work with the homeless population. We have a full-time project manager that works with the farm labor.
Okay, so this is for a short period of time in the winter time?
Right, exactly.
And there's $32,000, you said?
$32,000 is what we paid last year.
And from what, from what date to what date?
From the end of November, beginning of December, to March 31st.
Any other questions, Commissioner Garcia?
And I don't recall, excuse me, I don't recall you asking me that question before, because I would have sent you-
What about the qualifications, certification?
Yes, I can send you, I can send you a set of qualifications. I'll do that tomorrow.
And are we using the same case manager now as we used?
We'd like to use CAPMC. I don't know if they'll provide the same body or not. Probably they will.
So can you give me a ballpark figure of what the certification of this person is? What educational level?
I, I can give you an estimate. They need to be degreed in some way in either social studies or psychology, or have some experience with negotiations, have some experience with one-on-one counseling. So there, there are things you have to have. We can't just put anybody in that position, but I'm happy to send you all of that tomorrow.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I'd like to speak to her qualifications. Honestly, Mr. Councilman, I, I don't know exactly what her qualifications are, but I can tell you that she comes highly respected from CAPMC, and I think she was an absolute gem for the Pomona Ranch project. I will also say that this isn't a lot of money. We fall short of what's needed, and I think we had the very long discussion over CDBG funding and the admin money, and so we are going to have our 2019-2020 budget-
Yes.
-for Housing Authority-
Yes.
-coming up, which the council will then have decisions to be made if we're going to continue to fund this. We're also going to have opportunity for other entities like Madera County and CAPMC and others that have verbally committed to helping Pomona Ranch run. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item C1.
Sir, connect.
Of course, I just wanted to put the motion on the table, that's all. We'll still have further discussion.
Yeah, and in the short term, I have, I don't have a personal problem with this. It's a, it's a request being made, and I think it's adequate for us to, to approve something of this nature to, to move forward. I'm looking at the long-term picture. That's what I'm looking at. And so I ask these questions so I'll have an idea. So when we get into the next budget item and we're talking about that, then I'll have an idea of what we're talking about, you know?
And I want you to have that idea.
Actually, I couldn't agree more, Mr. Councilman. Having, having a program is one thing. Having a program that is sustained is another, and I think that's kind of why we're having this discussion, to be honest with you, is, is it was a feel-good. We did a lot of good for a lot of people, but maybe the forecast to, about sustainability was, was not discussed early on, and that's why we're here. So it's a very good question to ask, that if we want to continue this program, we need to be a little more solid in our footing as far as financing, financing and budgeting. So, yeah, I agree with you totally.
So Mayor Madellin, with your motion, could you motion the corrections on page six and seven?
That would include the corrections that were made on page six and seven.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Montes?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairperson Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Madellin?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and zero noes. Motion passes.
Ignorantly, thank you.
Well, we'll have to have your signature, Chairperson.
Got it.
And we'll try to get it in tomorrow because the vet's been waiting on it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Michelle. We have no written communications, no administrative reports. Do we want to hold reports for council? Sounds good. With that, I'd like to adjourn the Housing Authority meeting at 6:14. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll do a quick change, and we will move into the additional meetings. Stay right there. Claudia, we're still rolling, right? Okay. With that, I'd like to move into our regular meeting of the Madera City Council and also a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. We've already gone through roll call, but I had asked Pastor Fred to stick around. We had a special meeting at 5:45, and he gave us a prayer then, and he says, should I stick around for the six o'clock meeting? And I said, yes. We can always use double the prayer. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll stand with me, and welcome Pastor Fred Thurman from New Life Assembly for a second invocation.
Well, Heavenly Father, we bless you for your presence here tonight, and we sense that your grace is sufficient to help us, Lord, in all decision-making yet to come. We thank you, Father, that wisdom is given in your Son Christ, and we bless you today for that wisdom manifest here. We thank you now, Lord, for just prospering our city and bringing us into that place that, Lord, we know you desire to be a great city, a place where people want to be and want to live here. And so we thank you, we bless you, and just grace and peace upon everybody in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Fred. And for those of you who missed, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance once again as well. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Also, under public comment, we had a wonderful young lady in Samantha Rocha speak during public comment, so I will open up public comment again. If somebody's wishing to speak under public comment, please do so, and I will then read Well, Sheri, before you speak, I'm now going to have to read the definition of public comment. Don't go anywhere, let me just read this. "The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any actions on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond at this time." Please, name and address, and we'd love to hear from you.
Alan Gilmore with Madera County Department of Public Health.
Sheri Baki, Madera Community Hospital, 1250 East Omen Avenue, 93637.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, we come to you tonight to talk to you about an amazing event that's coming up, a partnership between Madera Community Hospital and Madera County Public Health, and that's the farmer's market that will be starting on June 20th. The farmer's market is going to be held at Madera Community Hospital. It's going to run through August 8th, every Thursday from 3:00 until 6:00 p.m., and this has been a great opportunity, I think, for public health and for the hospital to come together and work together on behalf of the community and to provide a program and services that we think will benefit the community tremendously.
Thanks, Alan. Couple of things I'd like to add is, the hospital couldn't have moved forward with this project without a temporary use permit provided by the City of Madera. There was no way that we were changing the hospital use from critical care and general acute care to a farmer's market. So thanks to the City of Madera for making that happen. We also feel like this farmer's market project has been in the works in a partnership with, first, starting with First Five, and then the county took it over, and I think maybe with a private agency partnering with a government agency, we can really make this happen. We're not relying on government funds necessarily to make our operational plan happen, and certainly community outreach and health and wellness is a priority of our hospital. But I think what's taken this to the next level is really the guidance of the county health department and incorporating things like an EBT option. So those residents who need to purchase fruits and vegetables using their EBT can do so at this market, as well as us taking WIC vouchers and senior vouchers, and so it's very inclusive. We have a built-in audience with our physicians and our employees, which we're topping out at about 800-plus employees right now, and the doctors who have offices on our campus, which happen to be cardiologists and pulmonologists, are highly supportive of this type of activity on the hospital campus. We also serve a lot of Medi-Cal patients through our rural health clinic and our specialty clinic. So again, we have a lot of traffic on the hospital campus, which I believe will really help make this activity a success for the entire community. We also have flyers, if anyone would like them, and I apologize that I did not put the Spanish flyer on the back of the English, but we are, thanks to the county's help, making sure that we promote it in both languages.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
Councilman Hawley would like to say something.
Yes, I have a question. I'd just like to know where you're going to be setting up at.
Well, the hospital has an amazing campus, and the more we explore it, the more options we have for holding events outside. So anyone who attended our last fall mixer, it was on the front of, in the front section of the hospital on the lawn.
Okay.
So the benefit for holding it there is we have direct access to restrooms and potable water and some of the things that USDA and other regulatory agencies are asking for in setting up an activity like this.
Very good, thank you.
Just give Claudia the flyers, and she'll make sure we get it, get each one. I'm Sheri, I'm sure this was discussed, but I'm just going to bring it up. We have a wonderful MAX bus system-
Yes.
...that does go out to the hospital, and so are those times going to coincide possibly with the event to make sure that our residents can get to and from?
Absolutely. In fact, the bus drops off right next to where the market's located, and so we wanted to make sure that that was one of the features and benefits. We did have some questions from our internal constituents, specifically staff, wanting to know, well, why it's so late in the day? Well, I had to let them recognize the fact that they don't have a place to store fruits and vegetables. The other thing is most outpatient services happen early in the morning, right? Lab draws, radiology exams, those types of things, and we wanted to be respectful of our physicians and the need for patient care, and so then we really did look at the transit route and said, this is going to be a good match. People are going to be able to get here during the day as well as after work, so.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that. We appreciate you working together with our staff and making this happen. I'm excited about it.
I can just add, we are also going to be accepting WIC vouchers and also senior vouchers, so that's a plus, and from the public health department standpoint, we're hoping to continue to grow the opportunities for farmer's markets in the community.
Fantastic. Thank you for the flyer. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Bill Hoffridge, resident of Madera County, 15707 Road 22 and 1/2. Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to follow up on our event we had in May out at the airport, a fly-in, which featured several World War II aircraft. We had a very successful event, car show included, a lot of interest, a lot of support now from Erickson's Air Museum in Oregon, the Commemorative Air Force down south in Southern California, and Chuck Wentworth and Paso Robles, and I think next year could be even a better show. And I want to thank you for the use of the airport, and I see you got something coming up that we might be interested in on special use, so I think I'll stick around for that. Didn't know it was coming up, but I want to thank you again. We did have a good show, safe show, and the airport was left clean. Everybody did a real good job. We had a good time. Thank you.
Fantastic, Bill. Thanks very much for that. Glad it was a success. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Move into our workshop, this evening's workshop, item A1, this is Madera County Economic Development Commission Program Overview, given by Mr. Bobby Kahn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bobby Kahn, Madera County Economic Development Commission, 2425 West Cleveland Avenue, Suite 101. Just want to give you an overview and, and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. We are planning to come before you on a regular basis to keep lines of communication open and, and make sure that all your questions are being answered or we can get the answers to you. Just starting with some of the projects that are going on, the TramPAC project, which I think you're, most, all of you are aware of, is about ready to break ground. They're putting the final touches on some of the tweaks of the site plan, but that, you should be getting a notice of a groundbreaking on that, I would say, within the next 30 days. Premium Bottle Waters, which is a plastic bottle manufacturer, also going in Freedom Industrial Park. Tenant improvement plans are in plan check right now. Their equipment is being ordered, it's being shipped from overseas, so that, we've been coordinating with your staff on that to make sure that as the equipment arrives, that the permits will be in place because there'll be an installation team that comes with this, and they wanted to make sure that everything is done timely. Your staff has been, as always, has been very supportive. Castellucci Enterprises, which is in the airport industrial park, their equipment is, been installed, and they're starting to work the kinks out to get ready to go into production. Full Throttle Suspension, which is also in the airport industrial park right across the street from your new fire station, is working on grading permits, and we will be assisting them with the groundbreaking once they get the ground kind of leveled off and we get, get, so everybody's not standing in the weeds out there. Last week, I was over in Las Vegas attending the International Council of Shopping Centers Trade Show, which is a, probably, I believe, is the largest retail trade show in the United States. in the United States. It takes up the entire Las Vegas Convention Center, and there's approximately 50,000 to 60,000 people that attend. It's a very busy show, and with a lot of retailers and developers and real estate brokerage companies. Going into this show, we were able to contact 47 individual businesses. While at the show, we met with 15 businesses, one-on-one. There was at least four solid leads that came out of this that we're doing follow-up on, but we're also following up with other ones that I would not necessarily classify at this time as solid leads, but have, showing interest and asking for more information. So, we'll be going through the list. I have a whole sheet of notes that we are ticking off to make sure that we promptly follow up. We also met with two shopping center developers, showed them some possible projects in the city of Madera. The main one being, as you may or may not know, but the Zelman Development Property, which is the property north of where Love's is, it's on the north side of Avenue 17. Mr. Riley, Ben Riley, passed away suddenly in January. His daughter has put the mark, the property on the market and is aggressively marketing that. She called me and asked me for my assistance on getting, getting the recommendations, getting some more background on it. So, I've been in close contact with her, and then, the listing agent that has the property is also a close contact of mine that is going to be handling the sale of that. We're hoping that the sale can, and the Riley family is hoping that the sale can occur and close escrow this year for some tax reasons. And then, while I was in Las Vegas, I also had a chance to meet with eight brokers that work on the national level or represent national tenants. Moving on to high-speed rail, we were able to institute the Y-Madera Committee Meeting, and when we say Y-Madera, that's W-Y-E-Madera Committee, it had, we, several years ago, or I shouldn't say several, a couple of years ago, we were meeting on a regular basis. The committee kind of stopped meeting, it seemed like there was not a lot of content. That meeting is really driven over on the other side of the street by Supervisor Rodriguez's office, but communicated the desire to start those meetings again. So, they've had two meetings and have made, I think, outstanding progress in coordinating with not only the county and the city, but also the city of Chowchilla. There's a public hearing going on in Chowchilla right now on the West Y. The county and the city of Chowchilla are, are working together to coordinate their comments, and then, also, the city of Madera is also invited to make any comments at this particular time on that EIR that the city of Madera may feel may have an impact on your jurisdiction. Moving on to the next item, Select USA. Select USA is a, is an international trade show. It, it is all basically foreign investment companies, companies that are overseas and are looking to expand into the United States, or some of them have a location in the United States but are looking to expand further in the United States. In order to qualify to go to this meeting or to go to this conference, the businesses, the foreign businesses, have to be vetted and qualified by the, the United States Department of Commerce. It is held in Washington, D.C. The, the conference is tightly managed by the Department of Commerce, and we'll be going and be, we'll be under the State of California banner, but we will be having our own marketing, we'll be marketing just Madera County. That is a very interesting show. You meet a lot of different people from, that have a lot of different ventures, that are looking at opportunities in the United States. Just quickly, too, moving on to the next item, with the governor's office, kind of segueing, that we will be working with the State of California, but we also work very closely with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, communicate with them regularly, and just within the last couple of weeks, we, we had our, our quarterly update meeting with them. We talked with their staff on a, on a quarterly basis. We set an ongoing, reoccurring meeting to where we talk with the, the representatives from the governor's office that represent this area, and we're, we're always answering requests for proposals for them and helping coordinate any economic development activity that's happening in the Central Valley here. Just some news that you may not be aware of, but the Crossroads Shopping Center, which is the home of Rancho San Miguel, has recently sold and closed escrow. The, one of the partners on that transaction is a contact that I've had in San Francisco for about the last 15 years, a very high-level broker, and he actually bought into this partnership. I met them at the property shortly after it closed. We did a complete walkthrough of the shopping center. They have a lot of ideas for improvements on that and adding additional tenants to that shopping center. I also want to just give a shout-out to Mr. Chris Boyle, as they had a lot of questions about different things, about there's going to be a tenant that's going to be moving into where H&R Block is now, and they're going to be relocating H&R Block, because H&R Block currently is in a building that has a very significant and nice drive-through, and most people don't use a drive-through when they're doing their taxes. So, they're going to relocate H&R Block, and they'll be putting a tenant in there that will be taking or using that. Mr. Boyle was very helpful in helping them talk through some of the things that they may want to look at when they're designing that drive-through. They also talked about digital signing, digital menus, and they were quite pleased that you don't need extra special permits and, and to have digital menus in the city of Madera. And as I told my friend Dave, this isn't San Francisco, that we are business-friendly and we do want businesses to come here. We're also in discussion, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail on this, because it's still in a discussion stage, so we're really not going, we, it's not at a place where we want to disclose names, but there is a significant brewery pub business that is interested in looking at Madera, or actually, we already have them looking at Madera. We've already talked with them, we've sent them information. We're, I was kind of looking at my email while I was waiting through the other Housing Authority meeting to see, because he was talking about meeting at a particular site either tomorrow or the next day on that. And again, I want to thank your staff. I had some questions about zoning on a place that's going to be a substantial-sized building, but it's also going to have a brewery element to it, which is, if you're strictly a brewery, brewery element, I would, I was thinking that that would be more of an industrial zone, but it's important to this client that the, that he be able to brew, but also have the restaurant element to that. And so, I wanted to make sure that we would be able to place that building in this, in, in a commercial zone, rather than having to limit them to some type of an industrial area, which I just don't think would be the fit that they're going to be looking for. So, staff was very prompt and, and very helpful in responding to that. Just kind of closing out a little bit, I'm hoping that all of you receive our eBiz newsletter. It's a, it's a monthly newsletter, usually comes out the first, first week of the month. We have currently over 1,200 subscribers to that, so we get quite a bit of play. And I also invite you and your staff, if they have any economic development-related news that they want to share through that, that newsletter, to feel free to contact us, and we're happy to push that out. And in fact, we have, I believe it is two properties that we're featuring in that, in the newsletter this month that are City of Madera properties. We usually highlight one or two properties a month. We can't highlight every property we have, but as properties hit the market, we usually will try to pick, you know, new commercial listings that are, are new onto the market to push them out, because out of our 1,200 subscribers, several hundred of those are real estate brokers, commercial and industrial real estate brokers. And I know I've brought this up to you before, and just kind of wanted to, to just kind of refresh your memory on it. We do manage your revolving loan fund. This is City of Madera money that we manage for you, and currently, we have five outstanding loans. When I say five outstanding, five businesses in the City of Madera have loans with us, with a total outstanding balance of 337,200. Now, the, the other good thing about this loan program is that when we loan the money to the businesses, there is a job creation element. So, for every $35,000 that they borrow, they have to create one job, at least one job. So, it not only provides more what we call risk money to small businesses, it also allows them to expand, but it also creates jobs for the citizens of Madera. Currently, in our bank account, we have approximately $117,000 available to loan out, and as the loan program says, revolving loan, it's basically just that. As we loan the money out, it gets paid back, we take, loan it out over and over and over again. This originated through a CDBG request for funds, and that's how we started it, was the city council granted us the money, and we were able, I think we did three requests over a three-year period to start the program, and then, we have not been, we've been able to sustain it through just the revolving loan part, part of it, so we haven't had to come back and ask for any more seed money to keep the program going. And we've had it going now for probably, I'm going to say, at least 10 years. Lastly, I'm hoping that all of you received within the last day or two, invitation on my behalf to have a personal meeting with me. You should have received one, and hopefully, you received one in the month of May as well. I, my doors are open to you. It's something that we're going to invite you every month. You don't, I'm not saying you have to meet with me every month, but we're, we want you to know that our doors are open. We're happy to sit down with you. There are some, when we have a one-on-one meeting, there are some things that I feel that I could share with you that are a little bit more on the confidential side, similar to our executive committee meeting, some of the reports that we hand out there, but we collect them because we, really, these are confidential documents that we don't want leaving the building. But as an elected official or your city manager, I'm happy to share that, you know, on a one-on-one basis, or, you know, I can even, if it's convenient for you, I can either, even meet with, you know, two or three. I know we can't go over three, but it doesn't have to be one-on-one. But I did want to extend that invitation to you. You will be getting that invitation on a monthly basis. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, Bobby. Thank you very much for that very informative report. Any questions of Mr. Khan at this time? Councilwoman Gallegos.
Bobby, a couple quick questions. Select USA, you said we're going. Who's attending that conference?
Me.
It's just you going?
Just me.
Okay.
Last year, there was a person from Chowchilla and a, and a person from the City of Madera, but this year, they elected, it was kind of by default that they're just, I'm just going by myself.
Who made that decision?
Well, I think the cities, the, the cities just didn't want to spend the money to send somebody this year. I mean, it's not a decision I make. It's, you know, we, we put it out there. The, the county, the county started sending somebody last year, and then their flight got delayed, and they got frustrated, so they didn't, they just decided to fly home and not go. So, they didn't show up, and then, we had a representative from Chowchilla that was notified that his hotel was being bumped, and so, he decided he wasn't going to go. So, last year, we went from five to three, county, myself, and this year, the county decided not to send anybody, and the city of Chowchilla decided not to send anybody. And in the past, the last year, Dave Merchant was the representative that went with us.
Okay. The Y Committee Meeting, when was the last meeting you had with that?
Last meeting was Friday, last Friday.
Last Friday, okay.
And if you, if you would like, the, we have the, the PowerPoint slides. We did share those with Councilmember Garcia at his request. We, we forwarded those to his because he has, or he is considered a member of that committee, or he's representing the city there. And, and then, the previous meeting, I was not at the last meeting, because I was at my grandson's eighth-grade graduation, but Julie took my place, and so, she has all of the PowerPoint slide presentations that we can make available to all of you that was, that was done by a consultant that attended that meeting. And the meeting two weeks before that, I took extensive notes and typed them out myself, and, and so, they are available if you want to just kind of read through what everybody had to say.
Perfect. Thank you. And the brewery that you, that you talked about that's interested in coming to Madera, is it in the city or in the county?
Oh, that'd be in the city.
The city.
Yeah, that's why we were, we were concerned about, a little bit about zoning.
Commercial, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we could put that in a commercial zone.
Councilman Garcia.
Thank you for that presentation. So, first of all, just to clarification, I'm not representing the city at the, at the meetings.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I asked to attend the meetings. I really appreciate our city manager's participation, because he just adds, just puts icing on the, on the cake, on, on the issues and making sure that we're, that we're represented there. I am very happy to see that we are meeting again, the, between the three entities. I think that the high-speed rail that we, as taxpayers, are paying for, we should be able to benefit from that. I, I look at it as an economic generator for our community here in the Central Valley. So, I, I would support participating and then getting some kind of benefit from a project that is in place already as we speak. I do have a question regarding the, the loan program. So, this was something that was put together a while back. So, do we get any reports on who's obtaining money, who, what the criteria is for?
We can, because of some privacy laws, when it comes to lending money, we are reluctant to name the businesses, but if you come into our office, we're happy to provide that information to you on a confidential basis. The, the, the loans are, and that's a great question. The loans are submitted to us. It, it has a formal application, very, very similar to applying for a loan at a bank, a commercial loan at a bank. We ask all the same information. You have to provide us all the same documentation. You have to show us, you know, your tax returns. You have to show, you know, your, your, we pull credit reports, and then, every loan, I shouldn't say every, if the loan is going to exceed $35,000, then it has to also be fully collateralized, either through a UCC-1 on the equipment or through a deed of trust on a property. The, it's a nice thing for, let me just, and then it goes, we, we underwrite the loan in-house. We, we do that ourselves. And then, we have a loan committee that's comprised of five individuals. We have two bankers, an attorney, CPA, and a representative from Valley Small Banking, excuse me, Valley Small Business that sits on the loan committee. And they actually are the ones that review it. They're the experts. They review the loan, and they're, they're the ones that either approve it or, or deny the loan. Then, the final approval, actually, because it's your money, it actually comes over here, and it is approved by a representative from the City of Madera. Something else I was going to say, oh, the, the nice thing, again, about, about this, is it is what we call a little bit higher-risk money. We, it, it's used mostly for gap financing. We don't want to be the lead lender. So, we're, we're working with small businesses that are usually at the bank, and, and they've already have like a first deed of trust against their house, and they already have some things already pledged to the bank to get their business loan. So, we will go into the second position, as long as there's enough equity there, and we feel like we can collateralize the loan. We don't have a problem about going into the second position. And the other nice thing about it is, even though we're going into a second position, we're not raising the interest rate. The interest rate is very competitive at about 4% to 5%. at about four to five percent. And it's, they're all fully amortized. There's no balloon payments. When I say fully amortized, most of them are amortized between five to seven years, which is, you know, pretty typical for a commercial loan. But, but there are no call dates on them. So we don't prematurely call.
And I apologize to you because we do, we do have, the city council does appoint folks to the loan committee. So I apologize to you. That just kind of went over my head.
The loan committee, no. The executive committee, you appoint somebody.
We're not the loan committee.
Yeah, you appoint somebody to the Economic Development Commission who also sits then on the executive committee. But the executive committee is different than the loan. The loan committee are financial experts that we've actually reached out to in the, in the community and asked them to volunteer to serve on it. So they're, they're serving as volunteers and giving us their expertise in, in the financial world to review these. So it's not, nobody really appoints these. These are individuals that are volunteers.
So it looks like I need to set up a meeting with you so we can go over this. So it'll take up a bit more time. But I appreciate, I appreciate the time you've given us.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Montez?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for being here, Bobby. I just kind of wanted to go over, I know we go after big fish, but what about the small fish sometimes? So I know we offer, you know, the loans, the business loans, and we have A-Biz, but can you kind of give us a generical overview of what you offer to some of the small businesses as well, and maybe education, help out, assistance or something?
Yeah, we will, yeah, we, we help anybody that walks through the door. And we had, and I know Mr. Boyle can attest to this because he spent a lot of hours with me helping these people. But I mean, it was a Hispanic lady and her daughter, and they wanted to open, they do some bakery work out of their house. They got to the point where the business has grown to where they wanted brick and mortar. So, you know, we, they found a location. It wasn't the most ideal, but we worked with them and the staff. And with the patience of Mr. Boyle, we got them, got them through the process to where they could open their business. Another one was actually a referral by council or Mayor Protem Montez, the gentleman, the young man that you referred to us. He came in, he's a sole proprietor, looking to be a sole proprietor, and really had no background on, you know, how to go about a lease. So we sat down with him, went through it. We went through some properties with him. He had some locations that he wanted to, that he identified. We searched the ownership and made the contact for him. And then what we did is we helped him comprise a letter of intent so that he could submit a, kind of a preliminary offer to lease the property. And then when he received the counteroffer to his letter of intent, he brought it to us. We reviewed it. I explained the, the inner workings of what it, what it meant exactly per month to him. And then so we comprised another, if you would, another letter of intent that was a counter to their counter, which has now been, the letter of intent has been accepted. We, we recommended to him, and he took the advice of not signing any leases until the tenant improvements are complete. So that's just like two examples. But we're, we constantly have small businesses coming in, and we're always happy to work with them, anywhere from business, we've helped people with business plans, financing options, just any question that, that, if you come in our office, we don't care if you're a one-person show or if you're, you know, a 500. You're, you're going to get service.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madellin. Bobby, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the fact that we're doing this more frequently because it really allows the council to see what's being brought forward to the, to the city. I hope to see that a lot of these businesses do come and, and open their doors here shortly in the future. You did touch on high-speed rail. I know that some of my colleagues here also talked on that. But the why, you know, I, I think it's important for our council to understand what the why, what it implies for our city and what opportunities or economic opportunities are out there. If I go down the, the political aisle, then I'm sure that I'm going to have a lot of yays, nays on this high-speed rail. But nevertheless, it's evident that we have a project, a mass project of this size that's realizing here within the Central Valley. I think, I think it's important also for EDC to be part of that and inform this council as far as what opportunities lie before us. Years back, I know the city had an opportunity to support an alignment that would provide us and mitigate us with a lot of funds that could potentially help our downtown, the East Street corridor. And obviously, that wasn't the case. Many speculated that wouldn't happen, that the high-speed rail would not happen. And it's still happening now. But nevertheless, you still see a lot of construction going on, people going to work. That's a big economic development, a big boost to our economy. One of the things that I don't want to leave out is the potential for maybe a heavy maintenance facility and why that's not being discussed, why this city is not supporting high-speed rail and possibly a site that has already been approved and has been sought for in the past. If there's a new one, we don't know about that. We want to make this council aware so that we can provide some type of support. Other communities are fighting for that heavy maintenance facility. I understand now Shafto is in the mix now. And I mean, that's, that's, that's a huge boost to our economy, especially here. And I can't see that go on the wayside and not act on it. So I ask that we get more involved, especially with EDC. If, if staff needs recommend, direction as far as getting some type of a resolution from the city approving, or not approving, but at least supporting a heavy maintenance facility site, then I think it's important for us to move on that. Because as you see, it's evident that it's happening. There are problems right now with funding and all, but nevertheless, it's still happening. This is a mass project. Texas is now on, on board. Florida's on board. This is going to happen. And we need to do something about our local community here. And certainly, a heavy maintenance facility is something that we need to start talking when it comes to economic development. So I hope to see more of that that you bring here and you identify certain of those, I'm not sure if those are the conversations that you're having with this Y committee, but at least identify something that we can support as a council.
Yeah, and, and you bring up good points. And first, let me just back up to a comment that Councilmember Garcia said. Having your city manager at that table is very valuable. And the, and not only having him there present, but with his background and his experience, he brings a lot of good comments to that meeting and a lot of good ideas. So it's really, he's really an important element there. And, and we're lucky to have him taking the time from, I know it's a tremendously busy schedule to attend that meeting. And then also, just want to reiterate that as, as Councilmember Garcia said, that, that job creation, and there are over 2,000 jobs created already with the high-speed rail construction. Going back to the Y and the Y committee, just for the general information, the Y is basically is, is where the train or the high-speed rail will, will Y up to Merced. And there's been a lot of debate on where that Y is going to take place. Mostly, that debate has been taking place in Chachilla just because of the tremendous effect that Y could have on their community. So that's basically where they, what they call the Y. Madera County will be the only county in the state that actually has, houses a Y like that. We have, I think, more miles of track in Madera County than any other county. Going to your point on the heavy maintenance facility, that is, and I was remiss in not talking to that a little bit more. I got on to the, the environmental document. But that is a discussion. And basically, as we reunited this discussion with the Y committee, they have taken the stance now that we're supporting all of the approved heavy maintenance sites that are located within Madera County, including the Fagunda site, which is out on Road 13 west of Chachilla, the Shaw site, that's located around Avenue.
One.
Eighteen and a half, 20 in that area. And then also, the, the site that was a late submittal out on Avenue 12, which is the Mark Hannah site, just a little bit east of the college on the south side of the street, just right next door to Pacific Ethanol. So instead of trying to debate which site is best, the Y committee has made a commitment that they are going to speak positively and supportive of all three of the sites to give the high-speed rail authority even more options in Madera County. So we're not, we're not, I don't want to say we're promoting just one site. We're promoting all three, and those three are all environmentally cleared. So they're all sound sites.
So I would expect that that would be a conversation that hopefully we can have when it comes to economic development. So moving forward, I hope that we have more of that update and where we're at, what we intend to do, how this city can support one of these sites. I would hate to let an opportunity like this go to a different location.
Right.
And especially if it's political and we don't unite as leaders to try to bring economic development within our region. This is huge for us. It's a big project that's, that's taking place. And I think we have to really start having those serious conversations as to, let's identify, let's back it, and let's support it and move forward. Because, you know, these other communities are just as aggressive in seeking that, that heavy maintenance facility.
You're absolutely right.
At the end of the day, it just comes down to who's, who, who wants to cooperate.
Yeah. And, and the one thing too, just going back on a comment you made, the refreshing thing too is, is if you back up to like 2008, '09, there was definitely, you know, people for and against and arguments about, you know, is it any good? Is it not any good? You know, and there was a lot of political, you know, saber rattling back in those days. But what is nice to see in Madera County is that everybody has recognized the fact that high-speed rail is a, is a viable project, and everybody is, is on board with support now. I mean, there's no, you know, at the coffee shop or something, they may be talking bad about it. But everybody at the table in that committee is all talking positively and how, just, just exactly what you said, how can we maximize the benefits for Madera County and our two cities with this project?
Thank you, Bobby.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Khan? Bobby, thank you for the update. I know council had directed you to come by periodically and give us an update. This was very informative, and I appreciate the growth happening at Freedom Industrial Park in the City of Madera. And I do want to encourage my colleagues. Bobby has says he's, he's put, he's put an email out there, reaching out to each and every one of us. These are all very good questions. And I think if you spend a little bit more time with, with Bobby in his office, that where you can kind of get into, to the weeds, so to speak, and, and ask more questions and find out a lot of the great things that we're doing and how we can support not only growth, but jobs here in the City of Madera. Bobby, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. We'll be back here in a couple months again. But hopefully, in the meantime, we see you on a frequent basis. So thank you again. And thank you to your city manager for allowing me to have this time.
Moving on to the consent calendar, is there a council member wishing to pull any particular consent item for further discussion?
Yeah, I'm having a little bit of trouble with my technology here, but I did want to pull that one, have a discussion.
What item, number is that?
B six, please.
I'm sorry, B six?
Mm-hmm.
Any other council member? Seeing none, we'll pull item B six. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar excluding item B six.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item B six?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Councilman Garcia, item B six.
Hi, Wendy.
Hi.
Could you just give me a brief synopsis? Because I was having a problem with my technology, and I wasn't able to read the board.
Okay, so item B six is a resolution adopting the, the part-time salary schedule. I think since you've been on the city council, you've seen the full-time salary schedule many times. This is the first time you're seeing the part-time salary schedule. So this represents classifications that are not one full-time. A lot of them, as you can see on the schedule, are minimum wage. And then you have some part-time positions in engineering or special projects that you'll also see. So minimum wage has been increasing the last few years, and it's scheduled to continue to increase in California. Your current part-time salary schedule has, has topped out. Your, your current top matches minimum wage for most of your positions. So we have people who are maybe coming back for their fourth or fifth year, working in programming, like the after-school program. And the people we're hiring to work in their first year right now, they're all being paid the same wage at minimum wage. So what we're looking to do is adjust the part-time salary schedule so that now your starting step is minimum wage, which is where they will still be started. But there are 50 cent increments on the salary schedule so that as they return year after year, they have a little something to look forward to. Does that provide enough information, sir?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions of Wendy regarding item B six? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move to approve?
Second.
Once again, it's been moved and seconded to approve item B six as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item C one, this is a public hearing on objections to weed abatement and consideration of a resolution of the City of Madera Council authorizing the city manager or their designee to abate weed nuisances. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steves?
Counsel? So this is an opportunity for the public to raise their objection to the city's efforts to abate weed nuisance that may be on their property. In a moment, I'll step back and give that opportunity. The, but at the conclusion of, of hearing any objections, I'd, I'd request that council approve the resolution, giving the city manager the authority to abate those properties. And to kind of go over our efforts this year, upon our initial inspection, we found 385 properties were in violation of the weed ordinance. After sending out notices and giving them 45 days per the code, we went on to day 46, and we found that 134 properties were still in violation. As of the time of writing this report, there was 134 in violation. And I've had verbal confirmation that 81 of those properties have came into compliance. But I'd be requesting that council give authorization to abate those properties. I'll step back now at this time.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. And just kind of for clarification, if you don't mind, I mean, it's so very important for weed abatement, especially this time of year. As we all know, it's not if, but when we get fires, especially up in the eastern Madera County. And with Fourth of July approaching, it's just, we're definitely on high alert. So if somebody did have an issue where I acknowledge the fact that I have to take care of the weeds, how much additional time is given, if any, once they get the NOV?
So once we give, normally, on normal violations, we give 10 days to come into compliance. The ordinance and the state law requires giving 45 days for, for weed abatement. And so on that 46th day, we're out there inspecting.
We're really just kind of up against time. I mean, triple-digit weather today.
And, yeah. And as far as this, when they talk about giving extensions or giving us more time, I would, I'm against that specifically because the code and the ordinance talks about this being a fire hazard and this being a hazard. So if, if the law and everybody else says that, I feel like we should act as if it's a hazard.
And I agree. I appreciate your, your view on that because it's not just one particular area. It can affect city blocks.
Exactly.
And other people's lives. And so as much as we want to be lenient in our community, this is just becomes really a safety issue.
Exactly.
Thank you very much for that. With that, I'll open it up to the community. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, please come forward. Seeing that there is no one here to speak on this particular item, I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or action.
I so move to approve C one as presented.
Are you going to make me do a roll call vote, Hilda? That's what I thought.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Montez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
Final vote is seven yes, zero no's.
Final vote is seven yes, zero no's. Motion passes.
Wonderful, that passed unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Lieutenant. We'll move on to item C two. This is consideration of a resolution to change the name of the city's transit services from Madera Area Express to Madera Metro. Deborah, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Madellin, Council, Deborah McKenzie, Program Manager with the City of Madera Grants Department. So, I'm here to give just a brief presentation on staff's recommendation to change the transit services name from Madera Area Express to Madera Metro. I'll start with a quick question. Has anyone ever shopped at Goodfellas Dry Goods Store? Or have you purchased something online from relentless.com? You might be thinking, no, but if you've been inside a Target store, or visited amazon.com, you actually have, because those names weren't always what they were called. So, tonight, staff is presenting something that has the potential to change our transit system into something of an iconic system. This will serve as the first step in revisioning our transit services and how we meet the needs for the public. We're bringing this recommendation to you tonight for two important reasons. The first is, staff originally brought forward a rebranding naming of the transit system back in December of last year. And what we saw and noticed from that meeting was that there was consensus from council that the name Madera Metro really worked. We saw that as a success, and we'd like to be able to move that forward. The second reason is, we're somewhat under the gun, in that we need to meet federal grant requirements of some funding that we received to implement a transit marketing plan and outreach services. The grant requires us to have the plan implemented, the materials produced, by June 30th of 2020. And so, we'd like to be able to meet that deadline and utilize the funds that we were given to fulfill that project. We're recommending a new name for services that would go into effect as soon as approved, but Madera Metro would be phased in over time, starting with something like a Madera Metro coming soon. And then, we'd end with a full-on launch of the name, as we anticipate five new buses will have been delivered, inspected, and ready for service in October of this year. Our hope is to have the final rebrand complete and confirmed before then. The recommendation tonight, again, is for the name only, and as such, its immediate use will focus on the words only. So, there's no logo, we're not asking for color schemes or anything like that, none of that's going to be different. We'd utilize the font that's currently used in the City of Madera green logo that's on the website, and the word Madera would stand out bold next to the word Metro. So, I would like for council to know that there's been a great deal of work behind the scenes to implement service improvements. We've been doing a lot of training, a lot of planning. We really are on an ongoing quest for excellence. So, there's been a great deal of work in securing resources to implement projects that are also built, that would also build on this marketing and strategy efforts. For example, we've secured monies to have new signage at every one of our bus stops across the city. And so, we'd really like to have the name to help us move forward with that. It's simple, it's classic, and we hope that you will approve the recommendation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions of Ms. McKenzie? Councilman Rodriguez?
I do have, thank you, Mayor Madellin. Ms. McKenzie, now, you know, when I read your summary, it says to review transit image and become more appealing and modernized, so the Madera Metro, how did that come about? I mean, if you don't mind me asking.
So, I mean, the simple way that it came about was, we were looking at designs for a website, and staff used that name to show what it could look like. So, it wasn't necessarily we were presenting to have a new name. But the word Metro is just very simple, very thin, small, and so, we just kind of used it in passing. When we brought on the design firm, JSA, and they were, you know, using our ideas for what could be developed, and they were thinking of names, we presented, well, we've been kind of playing around with this name for a while, threw that in the mix for something to consider. When we presented that name to the Transit Advisory Board, the interesting thing that they brought up was, Metro really transcends language. So, multiple languages use Metro to mean transit or to get around. So, it was something that really fit, we think, with our community, because we were trying to look for something that would be simple and translate easily. And Metro also has more of a younger, hipper kind of vibe, and so, we're really trying to target our college passengers, and so, we thought that the word itself was kind of attractive.
So, you would say that the Transit Advisory Committee had some input?
Oh, definitely.
And the only reason why is because I think in the past, I'm not sure if I made a comment, that we also have a beautification committee, that I think when you bring out something like appealing and modernized, I feel that maybe, you know, in the future, I'm not sure if it's going to be with this particular project, but at least we have them for that reason, to beautify our community, whether it be through buses and colors and, you know, because you presented that to us as well, and I thought that was fascinating. But at the same time, I think we appoint these people also to have some community input, and like the Transit Committee, I'd advise that we also bring in our beautification committee as well.
Okay, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Thank you, Deborah. You and your team have done a fantastic job behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. I know one of the first things that we addressed last year was customer service. And although nobody's perfect, I know our customer service, there has been quite a few compliments and people who've noticed the change, regardless of the email we got today. But that's first and foremost on how people are treated, and next is that branding, that we have changed and we are doing something different. And so, I know a lot of hours have been spent doing this, and so, I thank you for that, and I think it's going to look just absolutely fantastic. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or action.
I so move to approve C two as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item C two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye, aye, aye.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guyagles?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
Final vote is seven yes, zero no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. You know, it's hard to teach an old dog, you just get set in your ways.
I feel like I'm having a bad day, so I'm with you, brother.
Okay, all right. Thank you for making me feel better.
Keep it on that side.
Moving on to item C three, this is a public hearing and consideration of a resolution adopting the Measure T Annual Expenditure Plan, the AEP. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The purpose of this item is to allow for public review and comment of the proposed projects and expenditures within the Measure T Funding Program prior to the approval of city council. Is public review and comment opportunities required in the Measure T Strategic Plan adopted by the Madera County Transportation Commission Authority, Transportation Authority, the MCTA for short. Each year, the three local agencies, Madera County, City of Chuchol, and City of Madera, must prepare and approve an annual expenditure plan, or AEP, for approval by the MCTA. The MCTA will then consider adopting the local agency plans into their annual work program. That has an acronym too, that's an AWP, and then they authorize the expenditure funds. The source of funding for Measure T is the one-half cent local sales tax approved by voters in November 2006. This funding source will be available for 20 years through November 2027. The funds allocated to the local agencies must be used for eight programs approved in the MCTC Strategic Plan. The Measure T funds are distributed to the MCTC programs as required in the voter-approved investment plan. These programs are the RTP Regional Transportation Program, 3R, that stands for rehabilitate, resurface, and reconstruct. There are three programs in there right now, or three projects, that's the Olive Avenue Gateway to Knox Project, Cycle 2021 of our seals and overlays, and Granada Drive Howard Dry, Howard Road Traffic Signal. The next category is street maintenance. After that, supplemental street maintenance, flexible projects, ADA compliance, transit enhancement, ADA Senior's Paratransit Environmental Enhancement Program. Each of those has a dollar value associated with those. For each of those items, there has been an increase this year across the total of those. Across the total, it's been about $109,000 more to the program than there was last year. The total program totals are $3,8,597 at the moment. They seem to be going up every year. This last year was fairly significant. This concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, staff recommends approving the budget and authorizing submission of the resolution to the MCTC.
Thank you very much, Keith. Any questions of Keith regarding this particular report? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item. Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
I'd move.
Aye, aye, aye.
I'd approve item C three as presented.
I need a roll call vote.
Well, there's no motion.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. It's been properly moved and seconded. I will ask now for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guyagles?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madellin?
Yes.
The final vote is seven yes, zero no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Keith. And it's not on all of them too, so this, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, but not on all of them, no. Moving on to item C four, this is request for direction regarding health benefits for city council members. Ms. Silva.
Good evening, council. I can be very brief, and then I will turn it over to you for the direction. The city's contribution to health for the city council is set by resolution. The city's contribution does not automatically increase. Premiums are going up, so that means that the difference in the premiums that will be effective July 1 will be absorbed by the individuals enrolled on the plan, and those numbers were shown in the staff report. So, if no action is taken, that's what will occur on July 1. If council would like something else to occur, we just need direction to bring that back as an action item at a later meeting.
You weren't lying about being short. Any questions of Ms. Silva regarding this particular item? Doesn't seem like it. This is just direction, so she will be looking for Mayor Protem Montes.
Well, I would like to see it tied to, because this is not just affecting council, it's affecting all employees, right?
The premium increase?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
So, I think it would be fair to tie it to the bargaining units that are still in negotiation now, because if we don't get a resolution with them, these increases are going to happen, right, to them.
Correct.
So, again, I'd like to see that tied to the bargaining units. So, longer we take for them, it could potentially impact them, I would want us to feel the same, the same impact.
And just for the record, all four units basically have the same plan?
They do. However, under the government code, you cannot tie yourself to sworn employees, meaning police officers, it must be non-sworn employees, which would be your general bargaining unit or your mid-management unit.
So, either those two are quite possibly just one bargaining unit?
The non-sworn.
Councilman Robinson.
I was thinking, is more participation, you know, more employees, does that reduce the cost?
Not necessarily. There are a number of factors that will drive premium. It depends who those employees are. If they are younger and very healthy, then yes. But we don't get to handpick our employees by their effect on our health premium.
So, the health cost increases every year, and it's becoming a burden on the city finances. And so, why don't we just eliminate healthcare for the city council, you know, sworn members, and just increase the pay, and that will stabilize it, you know, the cost of the city? I'm thinking of, you know, eliminating healthcare, like I said, and just, and the fund could be used just for pay increases, so they can seek out their own healthcare from other sources. Yes, I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Councilwoman Guyagles?
Wendy, help me through this. Our bargaining units, and let's just take mid-management, we're in negotiation, so in July 1, if we're still negotiating, our employees are going to pay the difference of the higher cost in the insurance until negotiations are settled, correct?
Correct.
So, is it possible to tie council to that same alignment, where the ones that are taking the healthcare would pay the difference until our mid-management settles as of July 1?
Correct.
They would pay the supplement?
Yeah, so my question on that is, on July 1, would you want them tied to whatever mid-management has going forward, like you did with management?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm saying yes to that.
Yes. That could be done.
And I think that's kind of where Mayor Protem was alluding to.
Yes.
Didn't articulate it as well as Councilwoman Guyagles.
Had a bad day too. Is that a move?
Any further questions or discussion?
You know, if I may, I just feel that that shows precedence as this council moves forward also, that we too want to be in line with what's happening with our bargaining units as well. So, I agree with that, and I move forward with that as well, so.
Councilman Robinson.
Well, you know, like I was saying, you know, the Calpers, you know, the pension fund is really becoming a burden on the city finances. And either we have to eliminate services for the city to make up for the costs of the pension, and we have to look at, turn every stone, look underneath it in order to save costs, to eliminate the burden on the city finances. And that's a big burden right there. I mean, we have to sacrifice.
Any other comments? If not, I think at this time, we're looking for direction.
Great.
Make a motion?
Do we need a motion, Hilda?
I think in the form of a motion would be best.
Okay, I hear motion that we tie our council insurance to mere image management, mid-management's agreement to ours.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call vote.
I don't believe we need a roll call vote on direction.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, that one.
Sounds good to me.
Getting better. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay, we'll bring an actual formal resolution back to your next meeting.
Great, Wendy, thank you very much. Moving on to item F one, this is a report by the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, an update, and we will begin with Councilmember Jose Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madellin, and I'm glad to report on weed, weed and more weed, yes. So, our ad hoc committee obviously consists of the mayor and I. We met with our city manager in order to discuss previous discussions. I know that this council, this new council did not have a lot of the information that the previous council had, but I think in sitting down, we wanted to put something in place. Cannabis has been a big topic in our community, actually, not just in the community, but in the state, and in these last years, and is a source of revenue for many communities. I find it important that this council start looking at maybe what other municipalities around the region are doing, what kind of ordinances they have in play, and how that can benefit our city, especially when we talk about revenues. We had our discussions regarding budget, we had a workshop regarding capital improvements, and I know that there is a and I know that there is a list of capital projects that can certainly help our community, and what other way than increasing our revenues to be able to help that? So in that, I think I would... As an ad hoc committee, I think we talked about possibly bringing some more information to our council, possible presentation regarding the latest ordinances that are taking place within our surrounding region, and also, you know, just a way that... Discussions within our council so that you can give us direction as far as how we pursue this. But definitely a topic that this council needs to be aware of, and what's taking place, and I'd see the sooner the better, I think, is best for us. I think we left this on hold for quite some time, so Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. I know you might want to add something to that.
Very briefly, thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. As Councilman Rodriguez had said, we were the ad hoc committee that was put together to basically bring back information to council to see if this is something that the city of Madera is going to pursue. Obviously, the state of California is pursuing it, there's other cities and other states that are pursuing it. We had a presentation by our police department, who actually paid a visit to other communities that have already been there, done that, so to speak, and if we're going to learn from other communities, I think this was a great approach to do so. We had the opportunity to go to Kalinga and take a look at their operation. I think we've reached out to other cities to see how they've addressed the cannabis issue, and when you talk about cannabis as a whole, it then gets broken down into distribution, manufacturing, production, and then, of course, retail sales. So there's a lot to be learned, and that's exactly what we're doing. I think what our job is, our task is, before we come back to council, is to make sure that we have all the information to see if this is something that's going to be beneficial to the community. But there are different factors to that. As we talk about an economic driver, we talk about additional monies, that's not really all we're about. We understand that there's a component of safety, there's a component of community input that needs to be had in this process. This isn't just about the two of us or the seven of us, but about how it impacts our community. So we need to make sure that if we're going to press forward, that we are doing our due diligence, and we are meeting with those people that are, in some cases, fast-tracking to get this done, for lack of a better term, for that dollar. And there are others that are a little more trepidatious and a little more willing to crawl before they walk to make sure that we go down the right path that's going to be beneficial for everybody, and I think that's exactly where we are. Tonight is not necessarily about a decision if we're going to have it or not. I think tonight is just kind of an update to say that we've done some homework, we've visited some sites, and we've gathered some information, but before we bring back something solid to the city of Madera for that input, we want to make sure that we have looked at absolutely everything that we can, not only the positive impacts, but what potential negative impacts there would be. So that's really all I have to say. Councilman, if you want to add to that?
Yes, I will add, and, you know, I did miss out on including Councilmember Garcia that attended the trip we made out to Kalinga, and at this time, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, Hilda, but please correct me. I think you also wanted to... You had interest in becoming part of the ad hoc, so if this council wouldn't agree, then I'm not sure if this would be the appropriate place to bring him into the ad hoc committee as well.
Actually, I'm not familiar with your protocol on selection of ad hoc committees, whether that's an agenda, but the easiest thing to do is just to put it on consent for next time.
Okay. I think that would... Well, we can direct the city manager to do that, and I'm not sure if that's still something that you wanted to do, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, absolutely. I think that the more input that we have from the council, bringing it out to our community members, I think that's a very important addition. I think I would be very, very open to that. This is a topic that I'm very interested in, and so, yes, I would like to participate.
Mr. Mayor, that be okay?
That would be fine. We can bring it back at the next council meeting, and we'll leave it for discussion, whether we put it on consent or open. It doesn't matter to me. But I am going to use that as a segue, Mr. Councilman. I think one of the most important components, if not the most important component, is our community. And so at this point, again, this isn't a decision that we're making this evening, but I'm going to give the opportunity this evening, if there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this particular item, to please come forward and share your thoughts. I ask just for a name and address for the record.
Sure. John Stocker, 1029 Pinewood Court. On our cul-de-sac, a collection of folks have moved in one of the homes at the end, and the quality of our neighborhood has declined significantly with these stoners and their marijuana parties in their garage, standing out in the middle of the street, smoking weed, the neighborhood smelling like weed, the yard is trash strewn, debris littered everywhere, cars parking everywhere. So, yeah, I think the council in this city has been wise in the past to limit marijuana in this city, and that you can proceed down this road, but I will predict that the quality of life in many neighborhoods is going to continue to decline. As, you know, as an offset to that, that I would propose that you consider allowing neighborhoods or blocks to declare themselves drug-free zones or no marijuana zones, okay? So we can, you know, band together and say, "We don't want marijuana in our neighborhood." And I'm also... I got here, this is the first time I'd been down, I'd been living in the city for two years, and as a result of what happened over the last several weeks in my neighborhood, I said, "I'm going to come down and see what's going on," so I'm glad I got here.
I'm glad you did.
Okay, so, and I'm glad that the Economic Development Commission let off, because the big problem in this town is poverty, okay? It's poverty everywhere, so we need... I'm glad to see you're going to bring the jobs in, but I'm going to say, "No weed," okay? It's bringing the town down. You know, the town is full of hyper-aggressive drivers committing failure to yield, speeding and super-aggressive tailgating. We don't know how many of these people are driving under the influence of weed. In the last two days, while I have to leave the house at 6 o'clock so I can get to my job in Reseda, one of the occupants at that house stands out in his driveway and smokes weed, then gets in his car and drives to work, okay? So I say, "No weed." Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stocker.
Stocker.
And your address, please, for the record?
1029 Pinewood Court.
Thank you very much for being here, sir, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Councilman Robinson?
Yes, you know, we just passed a law, I mean, ordinance, for no smoking in the park. And I think that we're setting a bad precedent by allowing, you know, weed to become, what you say? You know, we're replacing the drug dealers with, you know, this... Pursuing this weed retail distribution, you know, in our community, you know, it's bringing the community down. You know, we talked about it before, and we agreed not to do it. Now it's coming back again. You know, there's federal law against it. Just go to California and say, "Well, let's do it," or Colorado is doing it. You don't have to do it. I mean, for instance, if someone jumped out of a cliff, who are you going to jump out of a cliff to? So I'm against it. You know, it's bad for the community. We trying to have an all-American city, city, good for families, education, work. We don't need a criminal element in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I think what our ad hoc committee is just proposing is to bring back more information so that we're educated in this item, and we can make the right decisions. So I appreciate them going out there and getting that knowledge and bringing it back, and so that we can get the information that we need to make those decisions. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilman Robinson?
How are you going to get, you know, education when you're stoned?
We don't.
I'm not?
I'm talking about, you know, you allowing other people to get stoned, you know, it's bad.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the component that we viewed at Kalinga was more of a industrial, commercial type, so I know that we have an ordinance in place now that allows for certain people to abide by what the California state law is, and that's recreational use. Now, can cities prevent that? Obviously, there are some ordinances that obviously other communities have, and we can always make that stringent if we like, but nevertheless, I think what we were proposing as an ad hoc was to bring back the commercial component to that and how that really plays out in our communities. As far as the stoning goes, I think that's happened since the 19... Who knows when? I mean, stoning has been around for quite some time. It's happening regardless if it's legal or not, and I think it's a good opportunity for this council to really start getting some good information. Obviously, public safety is one of the biggest concerns, and that's why we want to have input from our public safety officers as well, to bring back and really coordinate with our staff to really see how this best fits our community, if so. If this council wishes to move forward, then we want to make sure that we have all the components in play, and comments like were made before, we also want to consider that as well, because that brings a lot of input to our decision-making. So obviously, we want to make sure that we have an array of input and come back so we can make a very informed decision. But know that the visit was not a stoner visit, it was more of a commercial manufacturing, what these cities are doing in these communities, especially when they're hurting. You spoke about Calpers and how that could affect our fiscal budget, so this is another opportunity for us to develop another source of revenue. And not at the expense of the taxpayers, I think we would allow them to give us that input, and if there's something that goes to vote, then we can certainly do that to so that we can have our voters let us know if this is something that they'd like to bring to our community. So with that, I just wanted to clarify that that was the intent of that purpose, and our ad hoc committee is to bring back good information to our council. And I appreciate the comments, Mr. Stocker. I know that the city does take that seriously, and we want to make sure that when we make decisions like this, that we're not impacting values of our community, but rather thriving communities as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Robinson?
You can't thrive when you are doing wrong. You know, they try to limit guns, you know, make it difficult for a citizen to... By limiting ammo now. They say, "Oh, yeah, you know, too many guns by it," so they try to make it difficult, set up hurdles. But with this cannabis, you're making it easy for people to take in this illegal, federal illegal habit and enterprise. You know, it's a drug enterprise. You know, soon after cannabis is allowed, then come psychedelic mushrooms, and then needle exchange, then you have people shooting up right there on Gateway. You know, it's a bad precedent, you know? I'm sorry, but, you know, I didn't raise my kids to want to participate in a drug enterprise.
Well, we appreciate your views, I certainly do, as a parent and also as a citizen of Madera. I just want to make it clear, as you are, about your stance, that we're doing nothing more than gathering up as much information as we can. There'll be a time for decision.
It's a waste of time.
Okay, again, we appreciate your views, and you should oblige and do the same. So this was just an update from the ad hoc committee, and if there's nothing further, I will now move into council reports and ask Councilman Holly.
Me first?
You first.
Oh, you woke me up.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, the mayor and I met today with the... How you say that big word?
The B?
Yeah, prometores.
Oh, the prometores.
Those girls.
Yeah.
It was a nice graduation that they had this morning, and I've been attending them for the last four to five years, so I'm one of the old folks, but it was real nice to see that they're doing things in the community to help seniors as well as the residents, so I thought it was a good graduation. The mayor, I had to hold my comments back because he was on... You know, he was there, so I didn't say a whole lot, but I left it for him.
Nevertheless, you're certainly well-respected and appreciative. Everybody's very appreciative of your support of Camarena Health and the prometores and their program.
That's all I had.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Montes?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Robinson?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos?
Just one thing for the live-stream residents and our community that's here and staff, that I met with some people at Thrive, and it has closed escrow, so that in my district, our neighbors and everyone that passes by will see that building now being renovated, and I'm not sure what it's going to be, but it's a good thing for us in my district and in the city of Madera that someone locally has purchased it and has plans for it.
Great, great news, thank you very much. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, we had the mayor, Councilwoman Gallegos, and myself had the honor and the privilege to attend at the Madera Unified School District, where they had the incoming and outgoing student administrations for both north and south campus. It is refreshing to see the... These students participate in local government for their schools and enthusiastically move forward to graduation and going on to bigger and better things. I heard some of them moving on to Cal Poly, MIT, et cetera, et cetera, so it just shows you that, yes, Madera is a good place to have your children in public schools. They thrive there. My five children thrive here in Madera, and so I just really appreciate being invited and being able to meet some of these young folks. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your attendance, both you and Councilwoman Gallegos. Mayor Protem Montes, I think I skipped you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to the city manager and our staff that went out to the Centro Nacional Benefits Fair, or Health Fair that they had. Not the Benefits Fair, I'm thinking about something else. And thank you to staff for going out there on really short notice. Apologize, but, you know, it was a really good event. They were out there, they gave a lot of information, and Councilwoman Gallegos and Councilmember Rodriguez were there with me, and we got to engage the community. I think they were really excited that we were out there, and thank you for the opportunity for doing that.
Absolutely, thank you, all of my colleagues. I know you spend a lot of time, not just at meetings and studying, but out in the community, and that is just so very, very important, and that is part of what we do. We represent the city not just on council meeting nights, but on every night, so there's a lot of great things happening in our community. I want to show my appreciation to all the colleagues for everything you do and your outreach and meeting with folks, and as Bobby Kahn had mentioned, there's a lot of great things happening in the city of Madera, not just with economic development and job creation, but we're moving forward. Home sales are up, we have much more permits, not necessarily on paper just yet, but there's a lot of, if not inquiries, motion to move forward. I'm happy to see that in the East Yosemite Corridor, in the Rancho San Miguel area, there's lots of room for growth out in that area, and so I'm very proud to serve this community and to say that we are moving forward, and things are looking very, very well in the city of Madera. So with that, again, thank you all for being here this evening. I think the sun is still up, and we're actually finishing our regular agenda, is that right?
Yes.
Is that right? Mark the day. Mark the day. Yeah. With that, I will ask Hilda for an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. You have four items on your closed-session agenda. First, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives are Arnoldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, and Chad Johnson. Employee organizations are General Bargaining Unit, Madera, POA, and Mid-Management Employee Group. Then we have conference with legal counsel, oh, and also the Law Enforcement Mid-Management Group. Then we have conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. Two cases, Torrevio Garcia, W CAB number ADJ11393943, and Mario Urango, W CAB number Next, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title Executive Director of Successor Agency to Former Redevelopment Agency.
Great, thank you very much for that. Everybody have a good evening. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and the House.
The City Council met in closed session, all council members were present. There is one reportable action and it's concerning G3 Toribio Garcia. The W CAB matter, the council voted 7-0 on a compromise and release for $25,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and with that meeting adjourned.